All right, we'll call this city council regular meeting agenda for February 20th, 2023 at 6:30 PM to order. If you would, all join us, please, for our invocation that I'm going to lead and followed by the pledges to both of our flags by councilmember Cozal. Stand, please.
Heavenly Father, we just want to come and stop for just a couple of minutes and ask you to be a part of our proceedings tonight and precede us and guide us and direct us as this council and our staff along with our citizens work through the different issues that face our community. Father, as always, I just ask that you bring clarity, good judgment, and good decision-making to each one of our council members in this moment. And I always ask, Fathers, we gather that you'll watch out and look for, look over all of our men and women that are on our streets even as we speak, as they out there protecting us, coming to our aid in all that they do in a time for need. And just be with us as we, as several of us are traveling to Austin this week. Give us all traveling mercy and grace and back home safely. In the name of your name, we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you for that. We will be moving on in our agenda, so roll call and certification of corals. Madam Secretary, I'll certify we have a coral present as all members are present and accounted for with the exception of councilmember Hernandez, who will be absent from the chamber for the evening. Moving to citizens' comments, did we have any general comments? Okay, I believe we have one person who signed up to speak for a specific agenda item, and we will call on them when we get to that, that item. So with that, we will move to our public hearing number one. Mohammed or John, would you place the, the item up for discussion and move into your staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Public hearing number one is a request by Richard Marcus applicant on behalf of columns Incorporated owner for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the installation of 104-foot tall wireless communications tower approximately 9.0476 acres of land within the general commercial district. General location is 1013 Main Street, Maryland, Texas. This slide on the screen here is the zoning map, and it shows the property located within the general commercial district, and it's surrounded by the same from the north and south and by residential zoning from the east side and light industrial from the west side across Main Street. The next slide is the future land use plan, and it shows the property designated for industrial by the future land use plan. This is an aerial map, and it shows the property surrounded by undeveloped land to the north, by the single-family residences to the east, and by construction companies to south. There's an auto body shop located towards the northwest, and across the street is the flea market. Just a little bit history on the property. There were a few existing structures on the property that were built between 1969 and 1993 and have been used for warehouses and at one time as a furniture store. Subject property was planted in 2012. This is a view of the existing buildings on the property. This is one of them towards the south of the two buildings, and this is another view looking directly towards those existing buildings. The proposed tower will be located in the far back, and I'll get to that in the next slide. This is the overall site plan showing the location of the proposed cellular communication tower behind on the far east side of the property. And this is enlarged site plan, and it shows the equipment shelter. It just comprises the tower in the middle with a proposed chain link fence all around and with potentially some ground equipment to be included within that lease area. This is a view of the tower. Again, it's a 104-foot tower, foot tower. And yeah, so moving on, this is a site, an aerial photo provided by the applicant and basically shows where the potential carrier, I believe it's T-Mobile, and they are currently located at an existing tower near the intersection of McHart Road and Main Street. They're also located in another tower. It's in the Brookside area towards kind of the, a little bit to the west. And this is a staff-generated map basically showing all the existing towers within 100, within one mile radius and within the city. There's one tower as mentioned right at the intersection of McHart and Main Street. There are a few outside the city limits. They're mostly located, two of them are located in the transmission towers that running parallel to Beltway 8. Planning Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing for this proposed tower at the regular meeting on February 6th, and the commission was discussed the proposed use, and they were unanimous in their vote for the request, including one condition that was recommended by staff. And there was one adjacent property owner that showed up at the meeting. He was in favor of the request, however, he was a little bit concerned about screening from his property from the north side. And the one condition that staff recommended was basically just providing the screening for the ground equipment that will be provided, and that will be a major screening wall to the highest element of the ground equipment that will be at the bottom of the tower. And that concludes staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Is the applicant present? You have a presentation, sir? Okay, sure. Thank you. Just make your way to the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record so we can tie your comments back to that, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Richard Marcus with Advantage Engineers. We're submitted for the request for the conditional use permit approval of the 104-foot tower. Thank you again for your time this evening. The few pictures that I did want to share was in regards to the existing location. You can see this is from the site looking to the north. There's quite a bit of natural screening provided here. We're not opposed to doing some additional screening, but I just wanted to give everybody a good idea of what it looks like from the various angles. So looking to the south, there's some natural vegetation. So, and then also to the east.
Go backwards just a little bit. We weren't getting them on, on our screen.
Yes, sir. So again, the first picture is looking north from the site. And the second picture would be looking to the south. And then to the east. And then looking back to the west. The site will be approximately 950 feet off of Main Street, so it is tucked way back in there. Again, it will be a 104-foot tall proposed communications tower, which will house additional carriers other than T-Mobile. And then this was in the staff report, but this is just a breakdown from T-Mobile showing why the, the need for the site in that particular location, right? They, they do have some antennas on towers to the north and to the west, but there is a coverage gap, I think. As everyone knows, everybody's using their cell phones for everything, and nobody has landlines in their house anymore, so that's why we have a need for a tower in this particular area. Any questions that that can address?
We'll get to that when we have opportunity for council input and direction. We may have some questions for you when we get to that. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for that. So we'll move forward in our public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. You can go to the podium, give your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Second call for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Last and final call for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed conditional use permit. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll open it up for council questions, comments, concerns. Anyone have a question or comment? Mr. Cozal.
Mr. Marcus, as far as the fence, the one landowner was, you know, looking for a different type fencing as far as masonry on the elevated part here, it looks like, I guess that's a chain link fence is what's proposed to be around the cell site. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Around the 50, 50-foot by 50-foot lease area.
Okay. And as far as normal type screening around cell towers, what, what's the standard? What's the normal?
A lot of times we'll use slats that are woven between the, the chain link fence, right, which helps conceal the equipment with inside. And then on occasion, we will have, we will plant some trees along the outside, typically on eight-foot centers, you know, and that, that offers just a little bit of screening. That's pretty commonplace in the tower industry.
And as far as the height of this fence here, what, what type of height is it?
It is eight-foot, eight-foot tall fence.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I have one. How close is it to the nearest resident?
Approximately 310 feet to the nearest property line.
Thank you.
And that's off to the east.
Anything, any additional questions, comments from council? Seeing none, we'll close the, the public hearing, and we'll go to the action item number one, keeping in mind, I think staff had a recommendation for a potential condition on there. We'll get to it when we, when we do it. Mr. Cozal, would you present number one, please?
Sure, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R2023-CUP 23-02. So moved.
Second. Motion, we have a motion and a second. So Mohammed, am I correct, the resolution would have to be amended to place? Would you put that condition back up real quick?
That is correct.
You have it for the screen? There you go. I guess the question for council is, do we want to require masonry fence or something different? So it would be up to amending this because their plan has the chain link, as he, as he talked about, staff's recommending this. When E&amp;Z, you know, made their, I know they don't, they're not really voting on it, but was it for masonry screen wall?
Right. They were recommending approval with the commission recommending by staff.
Got it. Okay. What's council's pleasure on that?
I was just trying to visually take a look at what that area is like. If I recall, it's, it's pretty open back there where that deal is. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the property to the north is floodway property. I don't know that it'll ever develop as is. South is the same ownership group, family that owns this. If they ever develop, I mean, you'll, yeah. And then you have, but it's far enough from the neighborhood that...
Yeah, and I mean, they've got trees all the way around. I mean, some type of...
Which, you know, they may come down at some point in time, but even then, commercial development backing up to the neighborhood is going to be required to screen that at that point in time anyway. So, okay. Seeing no other, any last call of questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cozal?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Just to clarify, this is for the amendment?
No.
Or this is just straight on? Nay.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving to the consent agenda, I have received one consent item to, to remove, and that's item C. Are there any other calls for removal? C and F? So with that, Mr. Kamkar, would you present the consent agenda items A through F with the exceptions of C and F?
Sir. Consideration, possible action, consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of item C and F. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Cozal?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
With council concurrence, would you allow us to just go ahead and dispense of the consent agenda items out of order now? I know one of those, Member Cozal needs to recuse himself on, so we can dispense of those. You all okay with that? Mr. Kamkar, present item C, please.
Consideration, possible action, R2023-32. So moved.
I was going to say, what happened? We have a motion and a second. Before we get to staff report, Member Cozal has something to say real quick.
So at this point, my family business does work for Frontier Waste, and I, at this time, will need to recuse myself from this vote.
Yeah. All right. So with that, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This item is a request from Frontier Waste, our solid waste provider, to add Blue Ridge Landfill to the authorized disposal sites in our contract. Blue Ridge has made significant strides since the TCQ agreed order was put in place, and the complaints out there are minimal at this point, so we don't have any objection to their request to add this as an authorized disposal site. That concludes our report, Mayor.
Okay. Good thing. Any questions, comments from council? Ooh, hang on, I got a ringing.
Question?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sir, I wanted to add, we're only working with the disposal site. The contract in and of itself, that's all set, and the rates are already set. We can't really necessarily do anything about that at this point. Or even discuss that until the contract comes up for, no, we're just doing an amended contract right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I, I think we may want to have a conversation about some rates and those types of things. I, I spoke to the person who sent us an email earlier today, and, and he's, he's okay not having that addressed tonight, just, but over time, we probably need to have a conversation about it, so. I think this is, oh, I'm sorry. Member Kamkar?
I had a couple of general comments. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and just take a moment to recognize, we still need to bring Paul Wealan home from Russia. It's over 1,500 days still outstanding, and I want to bring awareness to that issue.
It's actually off the agenda, so let's stay with the agenda.
I appreciate that. I'm just taking that point of privilege, so I'm going to make that awareness. Now, going back to the agenda, on the Blue Ridge item, a lot of issues previous to my time being here during my time. I, I have to give the, the Blue Ridge landfill folks credit. It's been probably three years since I've had any odor issue, and so I do want to highlight that. I think we have to acknowledge when we take stumbles, I think we have to acknowledge when we push the ball forward, and I think that that's an important item, especially in reference to why this is here. The item on the, the email and the others, I would like to have a, a discussion item with that vendor. We, we've been with them for what, a year and a half now, Trent? And they've got a, a website and an app that helps with hard pickup and other items. I'd like to kind of just do a rehash of where are we? Are things going well? And more evaluating the, the fee item that Mr. Crane is bringing up, I am not aware of. If the data is what it's presented, I do think that's probably a little out of the ordinary, and I think it's, it's worthy of merit. But I do think we have to at least kind of take a step back in this review, and I would like to have that maybe later on this year.
Yeah. I think that's a, I think that's a... I think that's a, I think that's a good point, and I think there's a point in time where we can, we can have that discussion. Certainly more data is, is, is needed. I, I'd like to commend the folks at Blue Ridge landfill for the work that they've done to, to bring their landfill up to standard. As I understand, Trent, they're within code, they're within compliance with TCEQ currently. They, they've worked through some of those agreed orders and, and issues over time and have brought their standard up. I've actually been out there to, to tour it. I would highly recommend each one of us go out there and take a look at it. One of the things that they, they got to the gasification, the gas side faster, that's the reason why the spell was what it was. They have their gasification plant up and running, which is capturing and putting it back into the, the gas grid. So they, they didn't want the smell anymore because it's, it's money leaving the, leaving the, the house, if you will. So, but I, I commend them for, you know, their work to do this. This just opens the door for Frontier and others to go and negotiate with them on a, on a spot, which may in turn help us with rates. So certainly want to look out for our residents and their rates that they're paying. If this helps us either slow rates or drop rates or whatever it goes, we'll give them the opportunity to do. And it's that landfill back into play. So last.
Just a point here. So when it comes to, I just, I'm reviewing this agenda earlier today. I realize this is a five-year contract, seems kind of long, right? And so were you just discussing whether or not maybe at some point in time, we could do like a midterm contract review potentially, or?
Yeah. Just, we have a discussion with more data. We all received an email, and, and Mr. Jefferson, I'll forward the email to you here shortly, just about some of the rates, not residential curbside, but commercial side. And, and so I, I, I spoke to the writer of the email, and he certainly said not to interrupt this, but at some point, we need to follow up and, and check the data. That's all. Last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
All right. With that, Mr. Kamkar, would you present item F real quick? And I know you had removed that, so.
Call Mr. Coza?
Oh, yeah. Oh, Joseph.
Consideration, possible action, resolution number R two zero two three dash four five, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the generator assessment we conducted after winter storm Yuri, there was a recommendation to put all of our generators on a monitoring system so that we can see things like whether or not we had low batteries, low coolant levels, generator running, high voltage, any oil pressure issues or anything like that. So we've gone through the process of working with our building automation system company, Climatex, to put the generators for our facilities, for our buildings, on the building automation system. We're also working towards putting all of our generators, generators at our water and sewer plants and our lift stations. We'll put those on the SCADA system for monitoring as opposed to the BAS system. So that's in the works as well, but this is to, to do the eight buildings with Climatex for sixty-three thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you for that. Member Kamkar, I think you were the one that pulled this?
Yes. There's some discussion in here about like an assessment of, I guess, progress around this, and, and it's kind of highlighted. I just kind of want to understand, prior to the assessment, what are our expectations and what are we looking to glean out of that? Is it really a, a timeline of useful life? Is it, you know, how we're operating? Could we be more efficient with it? I, I'm just, I'm curious, as we've had issues with it in the past around generators in certain facilities. I'm glad we're having more monitoring, but I, I'm just trying to understand, like, what is that assessment going to tell us that we don't know today?
What is the monitoring system going to tell us that this will provide?
Sorry. You say that there's an assessment that needs to be done as part of that?
No, we completed the assessment after winter storm Yuri, and the, and the assessment had multiple recommendations on our generator systems. One of them being this, put them on a monitoring system so that we can see and get alerts when there are issues with them, whether it's in an emergency we're actually using them, or if they're exercising, they exercise every week. If they exercise and there's some kind of fault or issue, we'll know about that and we can address them so they'll, that we have better assurance that when we need them in a, in an emergency, they're, they're going to be available and running. One of the other items which was approved with the consent agenda is, is enclosure heaters for the generators so that we ensure that the batteries and the hoses and the overall systems, when we have extremely low temperature events, that, that those generators are going to start, because that was one of the issues we identified after, after this winter storm. And then the other piece was just a, a different upgrades to the hose types and other identified issues with the generators that we, you've already approved a contract to address all those issues at a previous meeting, so that's in the works as well. So those were the three main recommendations that came out of the assessment after the storm.
And then if I'm reading the memo, the items in the green box with the three replacements, are those items coming up in, in the years to come? Are we, how are we going to deal with those?
So you're referring to the February twenty-four twenty-two memo, which gave the results basically of the generator assessment report?
Yes, sir.
So like I said, we've already, we've already, you've already approved a contract for the first item there, the priority one generator repairs. This is, and then.
Sorry, can we pull the memo list on the screen so we can, other people can see?
The item that was approved on the consent agenda was the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars approximately for enclosure heaters. We actually have some additional enclosure heaters needing, needing to be installed in a future phase based on what we budgeted at this point, so we'll have that as a future item to complete those heater, enclosure heaters. And then this is the item to do the remote monitoring through the building automation system. We're taking care of the SCADA, putting the generators on the SCADA as we upgrade SCADA at our, our water and wastewater facilities. And then the twenty thousand dollars for additional fueling capacity, that was for, all we had at the time, I think, was a eighty gallon or ninety gallon tank to, to refuel generators. We use that to purchase a refueling trailer with a much larger capacity, and that's already been bought and delivered.
And then items one, two, three under replacement, those are, what is the timing? You have your little note here, mid-year allocation. Is that, is that kind of the course?
So, since this is not part of this agenda item, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent where we are on these. I do know that the Country Place Water Plant, I think we were going through some upgrades there, and that was taken care of. I'm not a hundred percent on the, on the other two. I know we haven't replaced the one at the fire admin building. I believe we placed a lower priority on that because that's not necessarily a facility we will operate out of normally during an emergency. But I think the other two we've taken care of, but I'm. Correct. Member Kamkar, we currently have plans in place in our CIP to address the Country Place and Garden Water Well, and then we're going to follow up with another CIP project to address the fire administration replacement, sir.
I, I'm just, we're trying to just glean the, the timing. It sounds like we've got some of it, and this is part of that process. And so, you know, these all kind of build upon each other. So thank you for the information. Very, very helpful.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Very six.
All right. Mr. Carbone, moving to new business continued, number two. Would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution R twenty twenty-three dash one two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item and the following item are both about the Berry Rose Longwood Wastewater Plant Project that we've had many discussions on. This project reconstructs both the Berry, reconstructs the Berry Rose plant to a five million gallon a day plant. It also turns the Longwood plant into a regional lift station and pumps that over to the reconstructed Berry Rose plant, and then we will decommission the Longwood plant. So the item here, this item is to amend our existing construction manager at risk contract with McCarthy. And we've had that in place since the, we first started the design, and then we, we basically pushed pause on that design. We went through an assessment to make sure we were building the right project, and it was the most efficient project for the long term. So we've gone through that, and so this is basically resetting the C Mar contract with McCarthy. So it does three things. It restores the contract for the restart on the design for the pre-construction services. So the C Mar through the design provides plan reviews, constructibility reviews, cost estimating, and then cost optimizing for the construction. The second thing it does, it restores the contract funds that we used during the consolidation study. McCarthy helped us out with that study by providing significant cost, constructibility, and risk assessment to help support the determination of what that best project was moving forward. And then the third thing it does is it addresses some critical repairs at both of the plants so that the plants will operate well for the next three-plus years while we're under construction. We identified that we had several life safety repairs that were necessary at these plants as well as other repairs from an operational standpoint. We immediately took care of all those life safety repairs probably about a year ago. And so these are the additional repairs that are necessary to keep the plant in operating condition through the construction of the new plant. So this actually amends the existing C Mar contract with McCarthy in the additional amount of one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments? Mr. Owens?
Anybody here from McCarthy? Okay. That's all I want to find out. Make sure if you're going to get a contract, you're going to be here.
Good deal. Questions, comments? Mr. Kamkar?
Question. So some of this is emergency items, some of this is, I guess, go-forward items retaining McCarthy as a C Mar or the plant. That's essentially what this is.
Have to come on. Yes, sir. So it's critical repairs so that we, we, there's a few things in each plant that we need to deal with so that we can have those plants in good operating order for the next three years, so we can make sure we produce effluent that meets our permit limits. And then it, it kind of restores where we started from with, with, with McCarthy, so they can do all the constructibility reuse, the, the plant optimization along with the designers under the, under the C Mar delivery method. We hire the designer, and then we hire the C Mar, and then they basically work together to optimize the design and, you know, put together early works packages and things like that that'll, that'll keep the project moving quickly as well as getting the best cost associated with that project. And then, and then we'll come back with the final, the balance of plant cost, and that'll set our, eventually set our guaranteed maximum price for completing the project.
Can we pull up the memorandum with the budget on it? So Darren, what is the C Mar provisions? I know this is not the contract for the water plant. I'm very familiar with the contract. The water plant is, what are the C Mar provisions here? Are they the same, different, better, worse?
We have a standard C Mar that we've used, and we work and incorporate some of the terms with, with our vendors in as well that, that they have. But generally speaking, the same terms that you have in the C Mar for the surface water plant are very similar to what we have here.
For the sake of the public discussion, what are the items that change the, the financial position of the contract?
If they are owner-directed changes to a contract, those will be basically the responsibility of the city.
Let me ask a question. Since Stan Tech quit this contract in twenty-one, or we fired them, sorry, we terminated that contract. Trying to say there's an evaluation period essentially where we're going to work out design and other things. How do we protect ourselves if there is provisions that, God forbid, McCarthy says we need to change because it doesn't work for us? How do we, how do we keep those provisions in place while, while, I mean, we have a budget here that says two hundred and twelve, sorry, two hundred and thirteen million dollars. So how does that process work?
As far as, I, I guess I, I need clarity on the question again.
Isn't there some changes? Trent was just pointing out that they are going to review our plans, may change the design, but the whole point of the C Mar is nothing changes unless we say so. So how do those two interlock?
So maybe I can clarify. We don't have a design at this point. The next item on our agenda is the actual design contract for this plant, the two plants. And so.
So let me ask.
From that taking off point, we'll start the design. They'll work with Freeze Nichols hand in hand as we work through that on cost estimating, constructibility, you know, conflict of different things. So we make sure we've got a good buildable set of documents. They'll price that based on that as we move towards completing that design to the point where we set the guaranteed maximum price. Once we set that guaranteed maximum price, that's where basically they will build it for that unless there's any owner-directed change orders.
Correct. So how do we have a C Mar then if we don't have a GMP right now?
And this is more process, and I know it's. Yeah, so it's a, it's a two-step process. You go through, you bring your C Mar in at about thirty percent design. So we've, we're kind of in that range of design. You bring them in at about thirty percent to start working through the rest of the design to optimize and start costing the design. So you can make decisions of, do we do this or do we do this? Which one's going to cost more? And so that first part of the contract with the C Mar is your pre-construction services, and at the same time, you set the, basically the money, the, the, their profit that they make over the cost of the work. And then it basically works open book as you move through the construction. So they openly bid the, the, the work that will be done by subcontractors, and then anything they self-perform, they provide us with all the backup documentation for the cost for that. So when we award the initial C Mar contract, we set the amount for the pre-construction services, which is what this is resetting. And then it also establishes the, I forget what it's exactly called, but the, the percent they make on top of the, the work, the cost of the work. And so those two things are set in place, and then it's basically open book from that point forward with the subs and the cost of materials and everything else going forward. They'll make that, and then we'll set the GMP, you know, based on what they've bid out.
Is the data on this, this file, the two twenty-eight, the two twelve, the fifteen seven, and if you scroll down a little bit further, you kind of see our contingency and our project balance. Is that all based? Where did this derive from if we're essentially kind of starting a little bit over, which it sounds like? Where, where is this data from then?
So these numbers are out of our CIP, and those numbers are based on the cost estimating efforts we did through the plant optimization study.
Was that with the old vendor?
No, that was with Freeze Nichols.
All right. Sounds like we're kind of stuck. If we want to do the plant, we haven't got to do this.
If we, if we want to build the plant, this is the, the best and recommended way forward.
That's fine. I, I just point out that most of this is done on certificates of obligation, and I think we've had a lot of discussion about that. And I'm just generally uncomfortable. I just want to put my views out there in the world. I'm probably not going to put there. I know we need to do a certain amount of this, but this probably needs to go to the voters, but that's probably not going to happen.
So this is water and sewer?
No, but you're doing.
Certificates of obligation, so we've never put any, you know, that's our enterprise fund.
I know.
They don't, that, that is typically funded by revenue bonds, which don't go to voters either.
I hear you, Trent.
The switch to COs saves us a ton of money on the rates. So just want to make that distinction.
It does.
Between that and COs on the general fund side.
It, it's a lot of money to put into this plant, and we're not really, we, we love to say that the voters need to have input. They're going to have input on a gigantic bond issue. I just want to put my, my point out there. So, thank you.
Mr. Coza?
Trent, Eric, I don't know where the answer will come from, but this, this project kind of came along, right? After I got elected, as far as the, the numbers start popping up and everything. And I just want to clarify, this is still part of the process of Longwood somewhere around ninety percent usage, and then Berry Rose is around seventy-five.
Yes. So, yeah, going, going back to the TCEQ, sorry, TCEQ requirements for your wastewater plants. When you hit seventy-five percent of capacity on a plant, you have to start the planning efforts for that plant expansion. And then at ninety percent, you're required to be under construction, basically. And so Longwood's hit that ninety percent, ninety percent. We've been able to, you know, delay that because that basin doesn't have much growth in it, so we've been able to work with TCEQ on that. But the Berry Rose basin, you know, we've hit that seventy-five percent. We have to start that planning effort. And so we've got to go ahead and start with the construction to, to replace both of them as well. I think the other main and compel. I think the other main and compel, maybe even more compelling reason to move forward on these is just the age and condition of those existing plants. There's basins and main components of the, both of those plants that were built, you know, in the, in the 60s. And so we've got to have additional capacity, and we've got to, you know, start replacing some of those significant portions of the plant anyway, based on their condition.
So basically, in summary, we're up against a wall from the laws that we need to be doing this. One, I'm into the, the age of the facilities, both Longwood and Berry Rose.
Yes, sir.
Are needing, needing attention. We've got a little Band-Aid in the, in the interim for the two or three million that we're going to patch it to keep it rolling until we get onto construction.
Yes, sir. We've waited as long as we can wait and probably push the envelope on that to some extent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Barry?
One, Mayor, thank you very much. Trent, real quick question. I noticed that here it talks about revenue bonds that have been sold. Some COs have already been sold. So we actually have the money already. It's been contemplated in the enterprise fund. We have some additional COs to be sold. Were those actually contemplated in the budget for the enterprise fund that we just, we just voted on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Carbone?
Just to clarify, so historically, we've used revenue bonds backed by the enterprise fund. The reason we went to COs is for a better rate. That helps manage the expense of the enterprise fund and keep the water rates low. A big fan of going to, to the, to the voters for general bonds, but when we're on the revenues, on the enterprise fund side, it only makes sense to go with the COs to reduce our interest rate cost versus the revenue bonds.
Yeah, and I, I would add that it also lowers our bond covenant and bond coverage significantly, which also helps on the right side versus going voter-approved GOs. Put the AR back up, the budget back up real quick. Want to point something out real quick. There we go. Also want to point out that half of this project is being paid for through impact fee obligations, either cash or debt. So new, new business, new development coming on would be, would be paying for about half of this. And also want to note that if we didn't have that impact fee, all of it would be on the backs of, of people currently living here, be ratepayers. So one of the reasons for having the impact fee and the impact fee study, my, that this is just the impact fee debt numbers. Is this taken into consideration, Trent, the new possible impact fees that we're contemplating?
I believe this is probably based on our existing fees.
It may actually get a little better with.
And it, actually, it may be just the amount of the, the project that's eligible for impact fees, whether they are come from our existing or the new, the new amount.
Okay. So I just wanted to point it out that, that half of this plant expansion and, and all that's coming from people who are coming new into the system. So not just those of us that have lived here for a long time, but, but new, new construction coming in. So I want to make sure that we pointed that out.
Last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kim Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade? Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
All right. With that, we'll move to Ms. Cade. Would you present item number three, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-53. So moved.
Second. Motion of second, staff report? I know we just kind of reported, but.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just report the highlights on this one that are a little bit different from the last one. So same projects, but this is the engineering design work for the Berry Rose and the Longwood plants. Freeze Nichols was selected as the most qualified firm through our qualification-based selection process, which is a state-required process for engineering services. The work includes early works packages to purchase some long lead time equipment items and materials. It'll help accelerate the overall schedule as well as the engineering design. Staff work with Freeze Nichols negotiating the attached scope and work and contract over the past couple of months, and it awards the contract to Freeze Nichols for about $13.37 million. And I think, you know, we negotiated a, a good contract here. It's a big project, and, and so big engineering fee, but relative to the cost of the project, it's, it's well within the, the standard rates we see for, for engineering design. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have to.
Turn to council, questions, comments, concerns?
What is the delivery of the design? Is there a timeline of when we want to get that back and go with the final design?
So it's, it's a little bit, it's, it's fast-tracked. It's a little bit kind of a incremental as, as we have some early delivery points on early works packages that we'll be working through. But working with Freeze Nichols and McCarthy, the overall project is expected to be completed. I believe it's in about 36 months. We've got the schedule in here. Once we've issued them a notice to proceed after this award, then looking at project design, land acquisition, and about 36 months to complete the construction. So around probably four years or so to get everything completed.
But the deliverable on the, I think, was it specific for the whole project or for, for, or Freeze Nichols?
Well, just when they're going to have a, in theory, a price. Right now, that number is a little floating.
We'll have big pieces of design probably within three to, within three to six months for early works packages, and then we'll work through the balance of the design. It'll probably be about nine months till we really get to that point where we're looking at a GMP.
A year, I'll surmise, depending when.
Mr. Owens? I don't know. Is that the one from Freeze? There we go. They're okay with that. So, no, that's good. Last call, questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kim Carr?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right. Mr. Barry, present number four, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2023-47. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a dual second. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This project is the, actually, the last of the street construction, reconstruction projects included in the 2019 bond program. So in the 2019 bond program, we had a, a portion of that dedicated to street reconstruction in several neighborhoods. This is the design contract for the reconstruction of the streets within the Sherwood subdivision. It will also review and upsize any drainage deficiencies we, we did find in there. And it is for the replacement of the existing transite water lines. Those are also undersized in many locations, so we'll be able to increase our ability to, to meet fire flows in there as well. So, and then just to round out the entirety of the infrastructure within the subdivision, just a few years ago, we did a sewer rehab project in there. So once we complete this project, we'll basically have updated and replaced all the infrastructure within the neighborhood in just a few short years. The contract is with Cobb Finley, and they mount $782,418. In this one, the design is expected to take about 12 months, followed by about a year, a little, little bit more than a year of construction. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions, comments from council?
Just wanted to point out that it was a 2019 voter-approved project we're getting to. So we're just under four years from when the voters approved that, and we're kicking the engineering off as we talked about, all these projects we wanted completed or started by, in a five-year time period. So certainly a year from now, when we're getting close to the five-year period, we'll be going under construction. So we are getting to the, to the design. It'll be good because, as Mr. Emerson pointed out, the, the previous wastewater work that was done, it'll basically be brand-new infrastructure when this is complete. So another good project for an older area of our town being upgraded. So another example of that commitment to doing that. So looking forward to seeing more, you know, happen over time. So last call, questions, comments?
Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kim Carr?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to a staff presentation with city council input and discussion, background impact, excuse me, and options related to corrections to taxable value relating to the adopted FY23 budget and future FY24 budget. But before we go to the staff, uh, staff presentation, I think we do have a member of the public that'd like to speak.
Ms. Nancy Reifler? Go to the podium, give us your name and address. There'll be a timer for three minutes, and thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Reifler. I live at 3205 Wheat Metal Court, Pearland, Texas, 77581. Because of the $10 million deficit and incorrect tax rates caused by the error on the part of the city of Pearland, wouldn't it not be advantageous for the city of Pearland to pursue the Brazoria County taxpayers who reside in the city of Pearland, who have defrauded the honest taxpayers by cheating on their taxes to the various taxing jurisdictions, the city of Pearland being one of them, over the years to help defray the $10 million deficit? In such cases, the honest taxpayers are always the ones holding the bag and having to make up the difference. Case in point, the president of the River Miss subdivision, Dana Morrison, defrauded the taxing jurisdictions to the tune of $6,000.
Ms. Reifler, I know we're talking about the deficit, but using this as an opportunity to attack a private citizen who doesn't work for the city, nor is here to defend themselves. I think it's out of bad taste that you're doing that.
Can I continue?
Not if you're going to attack a private citizen at this, at this, at this meeting. If you want to talk about the deficit and you want to talk about the city's plans, that's fine, but I'm not going to let you call out a private citizen.
Okay, that's fine. So much for freedom of speech. So anyways, I guess I can't talk about that. All right, so how many other taxpayers living in Brazoria County are defrauding the taxing jurisdictions of Brazoria County? If there are others who are defrauding other citizens, taxpaying citizens who are defrauding Brazoria County but not paying the taxing jurisdictions monies that are due, shouldn't the city of Pearland pursue those taxpayers for the defrauded money, which in turn will help the bottom line for the city of Pearland to continue to keep its doors open and running without the possibility of raising taxes? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reifler. I apologize for having to do that, but I'm not going to use the forum here for citizens who aren't here.
I have with me, sir, the recording of her admitting to doing it. So I'm not, I'm not saying anything out of line. She on the video.
And I'm not here to debate it. We're going to move on in our, in our discussion with that. Mr. Emerson, you have staff report?
Okay, but again, if, if there's a possibility that.
Ms. Reifler? Time's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to start off with letting everybody know that our staff and finances has been hard at work, working through different scenarios with the budget, updating our debt service forecast, and, and understanding all those future implications. The good news tonight, we've got some more good news down the road, but we've removed one of the big unknowns in our planning moving forward, and that is that we do now have revised, accurate tax worksheet that was posted by the county last week. So everything moving forward, we're going to be working off of, off of that. So tonight, Eric and I are going to tag-team this. We have Mr. John Robuck, our financial advisor, here with us tonight to help back us up on any of the, the, the details we get into. We're going to get into a little bit of details tonight. But, and so hopefully, we can explain all those well and answer any questions you have. But with that, I'm going to hand it off to Eric to go ahead and get us kicked off.
Brought John for the heavy lifting.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we will be reviewing the tax-based scenarios based on our now accurate tax worksheet. So thank you to everyone involved in helping work together to get that done. We are also looking at updated debt service forecasts. We'll be looking at the property tax forecast for next year overall, as well as providing some additional context of, yes, here's what's happening next year or we think will happen next year, but here's what's happened over the past 10 years or so. That context is always useful. And then we will be wrapping up with an individual tax bill preview with all the caveats that it is very early on to be doing this, and, you know, it's based off an assumed tax value growth in a kind of an estimated budget. So it's got room to change, but happy to bring it forward and talk about it tonight. Previously, you've, you've seen this before. These are the assumptions for next year's budget. This is not the only thing in the budget, but these are sort of the larger items that we traditionally can use as levers or things that we've kind of earmarked to be built into the budget next year. Of these, the one that's going to be changing as we go through this presentation, this is going to decrease from 2.6 to about 1.6 later on. I'll call that out when we get there. Now that we have an accurate worksheet, this has been posted online as well. We are currently at a tax rate of 62 cents. Looking forward to next year with 5% taxable value growth, we see it being around, tax rate of around 70 cents. With a 10% growth, it would be 67 cents. These values haven't really changed since last time, but we've got some new options here that will, if enacted, would lower the forecasted tax rate for FY24. Moving on to the debt service tax rate forecast, I'm going to hand it over to the city manager to discuss some options that we're bringing forward here.
Thank you, Eric. So since the last time we talked about this, we've been working on some, some things that are going to significantly impact the debt service side of our tax rate. One of those is a update to our TERS model and the reimbursements associated with those. And then looking at our TERS defeasance schedule as it was built into our debt service model. We've also had brought to us by our financial advisor a debt refunding opportunity for this year that's coming up very shortly. And then we are also looking at our FY23 debt issuance, which we'll start paying that in FY24. So we're looking at the schedule of the projects, where we are on those projects, and our projected amount of debt we had planned to sell this year versus what we actually need for this year. So we took all these things, and we've worked with our financial advisor to, to start to update these things. So first, I'm going to talk about the TERS model reimbursement schedule here. This is the first and the most important update that we're talking about tonight to the debt service model. So I'm going to just kind of tell how this came about, and then, and then we'll talk about the numbers a little bit. So after Budget Amendment One that we passed in December, we were reviewing our, our debt model and our debt rate in preparation for our 2023 bond package and those discussions we were having with you at the time on, on the, on the bond package. So if you recall, one of the things we did in Budget Amendment Number One to address the shortfall on the debt service side or the debt side of our, our budget is that we took the 2023 TERS reimbursement of $10 million, which you see here on the screen. We took that $10 million, and we used it to defees TERS COs for those TERS projects, and that thereby lowered our debt service obligations for '23. So it was part of the fix for that Budget Amendment Number One for this current fiscal year. So as we were sitting there, you know, discussing those things, I asked Mr. Robuck, what our debt model assumed for all of the future TERS reimbursements? And he shared that the model basically assumes that we start. And he shared that the model basically assumes that we start repaying the TERS debt when the TERS debt becomes callable in 2026. And then it has it all, all the TERS debt paid back by 2029. So at the time, we were looking at basically what's in front of you is that next year, 2024, 2025, and, and moving forward, we're going to be getting a reimbursement from the TERS anywhere from, you know, $10.7 million up to $12 million annually. And so, you know, kind of with that revelation of how this was built into the, the debt service model, and also what the TERS reimbursement model was saying, we determined that we should, we should have Mr. Robuck take the payments as shown in the TERS reimbursement model and that's in front of you here, and then take each year of those and then apply them to the debt similar to what we did with Budget Amendment Number One and see how that impacted the debt service rate. So, you know, in the discussion, John, you know, had, had one, our concern was making sure all this is good and solid and makes sense. And John had a concern, you know, that making the change, you know, ensuring that the TERS reimbursements would come in as shown on the schedule. So we walked back through the TERS model, which is very conservative, much like our debt service rate model. The TERS model assumes only a 2% valuation growth on residential, or I guess the valuation, it assumes a 2% valuation growth on its AV, and then it assumes zero new commercial growth. So it's very, very conservative. And then we went back and we actually updated the TERS reimbursement, reimbursements to reflect the actual projects that we've either completed or we've bid out and we have a good handle on the actual cost. We still have a couple of TERS projects to bid out, but we got a good handle on what we are going to actually be reimbursed versus what, you know, was scheduled to be reimbursed. So I think the other piece is that the TERS model, which is Marsh Darcy, Alan Mueller is the one that, that put it together, it's got a very good track record of predicting every year's, you know, the TERS payment. So we feel good about that these payments from the TERS are going to come in through the DAP, and we'll have that available to defees that, that TERS debt. So moving forward from there, John moved ahead and, and updated the debt model using the TERS reimbursement shown here. And he did that, he did a couple of things. Instead of just defeating debt, he defees a portion of the debt, and then he used some of the cash each year to help manage the debt service tax rate. So he's, and then he still ran it having all the TERS debt paid by 2029. And the results of running all that is that it lowered the debt service rate by 3 cents starting next year. So big impact. So that's, that's number one. So we'll go to the next slide. The next thing we looked at was John brought to us a, a debt refunding opportunity. So this is the second update to the debt service model. So basically, we have a refunding opportunity of about $32.7 million that'll generate an estimated $2.2 million in savings or 5.5% present value savings. So that meets the general parameters we've always used for refunding opportunities. So if we move forward with this, we've got at the end of the presentation what the schedule would be for moving forward with this. So then the third, so that impacts us by about a quarter of a cent on the debt service rate. And then the last piece is the update to the actual debt we will sell this year, which impacts the 2024 debt service tax rate. We had scheduled in our CIP a little over $52 million. That's what was in our intent to reimburse right after the budget was passed. Based on current project projections and reconciliations and where we are on projects, we are looking at only needing to sell somewhere around $28, $29 million for this year. So that reduces that 2024 debt payment by a significant amount, which will impact us about another penny. So the next slide is actually kind of a, a result of all those three things built into our debt service rate model. So this includes the TERS reimbursement schedule, the 2023 refunding opportunity, as well as reducing the bond sale for 2023. Again, all TERS debt's paid back by '29, and this includes the $181.3 million 2023 bond package as well. So a lot of numbers here, so I'm, I'm just going to focus on the 2024 line and kind of walk through that. And so, you know, following that line across, you see in the second column, the $10.7 million, that's the estimated TERS reimbursement for 2024. And then the next column is using 7.2 of that to defees TERS debt. And then move over a couple of columns, that's the bond refunding piece. And then moving over to the right, the next to last column, the $3.5 million is using the rest of the TERS reimbursement to manage the tax rate. So all the way to the right-hand column, you see we reduced 2024's outstanding debt service from $44.5 million down to about 33, $36.3 million. So significant reduction there, $8.2 million reduction in, in our debt requirements for 2024, assuming we enact all of these. So move to the next slide. So this is our regular tax rate impact analysis that we've seen multiple times. So the results of the last few slides are now shown here on this, this slide that you're very familiar with. So second bullet point there, under this new scenario, so this is where we pull everything together, what we're looking at and what we were previously projecting in 2024, where we've got that rate down 4 and 1/4 cents from where we were. And then the maximum debt service rate, including the $181 million bond package, is 3 cents lower than all of our previous analyses. So basically, all this is with these very conservative assessed valuation growths on the left-hand side. So you're kind of following that 2024 box across, you see where our previous adopted CIP with those assumptions, we were at 38 and 1/2 cents. With these changes enacted, the 2024 debt service side would be down to 34 and 1/2 cents. And then we also see where the, previously, we assumed the tax rate would peak with the $181 million bond package at 39 and 1/2 cents, and that's now, with all the updates, would peak at 36 and 1/2 cents, so 3 cents lower. So I'm going to hand it back over to Eric now. He's going to take this information and basically walk us through the positive impacts that this has on the total tax rate with the budget assumptions that we saw earlier in the presentation on, I believe, the second slide. So hand it back to you, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so moving on to the total tax rate forecast, putting it all together, this is an updated version of the chart we showed you at the beginning of the presentation. So this first line shows the decreased impacts. Remember, this was about 2.6, now it's about 1.6. We estimate from TERS-related projects, the partial defeasance to save about $329,000. The reimbursements from the TERS-related projects will generate some excess cash that we can use to manage the tax rate in the debt service fund. It's approximately $3.5 million. And then they proposed 2023 refunding bonds would be about $131,000 worth of savings. The rest of the items below have remained steady since we last spoke because they're, they're budgeted amounts, and we haven't revised those at this point. This is an update using the accurate worksheet and assumes the TERS debt defeasance, the refunding opportunity, the debt sale, and then looks at the different forecast growth rates of 5%, 7%, and 10% to understand how sensitive our tax rate can be to the different levels of growth. We're looking here, if it's a, you know, a 5% growth year, we're looking at about 67 cents. If we are looking at a 10% growth year, it's about 64 cents. So we're gonna, you know, the window of what it might be is getting a little bit tighter. You know, this, while an increase from FY23, it also included FY22's change. FY23 was based off the inaccurate worksheet. And looking back to FY22, it can be useful to compare what would my rate be versus what it was a few years ago as a resident. And so I also pulled the historicals.
Eric, can you go, go back to that last slide just for a second? I, I want to linger here and just, you know, kind of point out a couple of things. So basically, where we were in '22 with the tax rate on here is, you know, just over 70 cents, which then in '23 really was artificially dropped low because of the tax valuation issued to the 6238. So with the corrected tax worksheet, our FY23 rate, the 6238, is actually more than a cent under the no new revenue rate, and it's 10 cents under the voter approve rate. So that kind of shows you where it is relative to everything. And then kind of focusing in on the green line here, I want to, you know, kind of walk through with the budget assumptions we've laid out and this 5% growth, will be actually over 3 cents lower than we were in FY22 rate. And then if we grow more, we get up to that 10, 10% growth, we're, you know, almost 6 cents below where we were with the FY22 rate. So I think what this means is that, you know, we do have the, have some capacity for this assumed budget and possibly some additional necessary things within next year, you know, that'll keep us within previous year's tax rates. So, you know, not, not necessarily for tonight, but in future meetings, as we continue to discuss this, I think, you know, we need to kind of start to understand council's desire or tolerance or where, where the U.S. is as far as getting back closer to where our tax rate was in '22 to support our needs for, for our operation, our operational needs. So, you know, I do, I do want to also, you know, thank staff for helping put this together, John for helping walk us through this. I asked John, you know, to punch holes in all these things. I asked the Audit Committee and Councilmember Carbone to take a look at all these assumptions and these things we're looking at and try to punch holes in them and to make sure, before we brought these to you, we feel good and solid about them. So that's where we are tonight, is we, we do feel good and solid that we've got a, a workable solution here to really help us out on the tax rate. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it back over to Eric and to, to conclude the presentation.
Also wanted to make sure you had in your packet sort of the historical tax rates by year. You know, we've been seeing decreases in the tax rate since fiscal year 2020. Again, the FY23, you saw this sort of artificially large drop from the previous year. And here you could see the range that we're, we think we're going to be in for next year. Moving on to the example properties, these are the same example properties we show each year. It is illustrative, every caveat you can possibly think of applies to it. It is not in any way indicative of what your tax bill will be next year as an individual. We don't have that information yet. We don't know what your home or property may be worth next year. We don't have the budget completely dialed in. So these are, you know, kind of round numbers.
And I think we were very hesitant to show these at this point because they are, there's so many assumptions, but they were requested, so we wanted to go ahead and put that together for you. And then as preliminary values come out in the next couple of months from now, we'll be able to update these to actual real-world examples, because that's what they've always been in the past for. So these are real properties and real-world examples that we update each year when we get into our, our budgeting process.
All right, so this first slide shows all the options, or sorry, let me rephrase this. This first slide here shows the 5% taxable growth without enacting any of the options that the city manager has presented tonight. So it doesn't include any of the TERS stuff, the refunds, the revised debt issuance, the refinancing opportunities, any of that. Here we see an average taxing increase of about $296 for each of these homes. And these are calculated using all properties, including the zero-growth property, just to be clear, because that's how we've always calculated them. And then same thing, if you look at this chart, this shows if the, what we believe tax is for individual homes would look like if the options we discussed tonight are all of them enacted by council. So this looks closer to about $206 on average. So they, the items recommended tonight do have a significant impact on the tax rate that residents would feel. Moving forward, we have several future meetings. On March 6th, we're going to be discussing the, the bond refunding, and I won't go through all of these, but it's starting to get into sort of our, our normal budget year. We're ahead of the discussion on property taxes. You can also see the ACFIR will come out on April 10th. This is an important sort of ground truthing of our, our financials. So once we get that, we're kind of off to the races for budget season. Next steps, we'll be talking about the bond refunding, the ACFIR, like I discussed. We will be looking with our consultant on any early AV data we can have. We think we might be able to get something in May. We will continue to review and confirm the accuracy of the tax rate scenario model. So we'll keep poking around, looking for sensitivity, looking for mistakes, trying to kind of disprove ourselves and take that approach to it and, you know, be fully transparent with what we're looking at and any caveats we might have. We will also be reviewing and implementing any recommendations that come from the audit firm the council has hired. And then in April and May, departments will be providing projections for budget and, sorry, for Budget Amendment Number Two. That's, you know, our other main budget amendment we do each year of how we think we're going to finish the year out, if there's any additional appropriations, things we want to put in or out of the budget are kind of done at that time. So with that, I will hand it back to the city manager.
But that concludes our presentation. Welcome, any questions or feedback? I, I'll point out, you know, one of the items in the next step is the bond refunding, so we're looking at bringing that back at the next two council meetings for first and second reading for the bond refunding we kind of gave you a preview of tonight. So have it answer any questions?
All right, yeah, before, so obviously, we're looking, staff is looking for feedback because we've got some, we've got some schedule tied to this, want to make sure that we're all moving in the right direction. First, I just want to commend everybody for rolling up their sleeve and kind of looking at this a little bit, not just differently, but harder than even what we had done before. When the whole issue came to light, you know, we, we're up here trying to give an analogy of, you know, you're in a major car accident or something's happened to you and you're, you're struggling to survive, you're trying to get, you know, the next deep breath, your, your, your medical team goes through triage and, and does everything that they can to make sure that your life is saved and you're, you're moving forward. And then upon, you know, stabilizing you, then you go through the process of additional testing and additional treatment to figure out where and what you do. And that's what this exercise has been about. We, we, we did that with the amendment to the budget, which stabilized us, and then we could all breathe and say, okay, here's where we are. Now how do we move forward? And some of the things that we were talking about was putting together the modeling for what is it going to look like in, in August and September as we get around to the budget, you know, to, to understand really hard, you know, what we have to deal with so we can make decisions in direction back to staff on various things, you know, even now. Because like I said, the last thing I want is, is our department heads spinning their wheels on staffing and this and that and everything else. If, and so now I think we have a much better picture of, of what that can be. Certainly, there's a lot of assumptions. We don't know what values are going to do. We do know from last year that there were a number of homes and properties that, you know, was assessed over the 10% and capped at 10 and those types of things. And so the question is how many, again, hopefully, our consultant can, can help us get out in front of that to gauge and, and understand that. So everybody, you know, that, that took a deep dive into here to, to look at different things that we can do, you know, in the future to minimize, at the same time, we're going to voters, you know? And so the story that we've got to tell voters on a bond program, this is a part of the equation, because they're like, wait a minute, I thought we had. And so now we can, this is again, part of the, part of the equation moving forward, because that's going to play into it, you know, in the, in the years to come. So kudos to John and, and all of our finance staff and Trent for the work and the thoughtful questions of just digging in and playing devil's advocate and all those types of things. And no doubt, Eric, we're going to have more and more of that in the months to come as we, as we learn more and see more. So I appreciate that.
And Mayor, if I may, while there are a lot of assumptions in the bud, in the budget itself and the overall tax rate, I do want to just make sure that the public knows and everyone here knows that the, the, or 1/4 cents on the debt service, there's not a whole lot of assumptions in that. That's pretty solid.
That's good. That's good. I think the only assumptions really were made with on the, what's the, what's the interest rate? And we always go high. So, you know, hopefully, I don't know that it'll do another quarter point, but there's always some good news possibly there. So with that, we'll turn it over to council questions, comments. Sir?
So Trent, so on these assumptions, I guess, on pages, it was 13? The assumptions for 20, for 20, for tax payer month? So I see that you So I see that you guys put in a half million there for just kind of random supplementals or something like, just some unexpected additional costs or something?
So we knew going into, you know, this, building this budget and looking at this that, that we would be, it would be extremely, extremely tight. But we wanted to, to, you know, assume some amount of supplementals to, to meet any priorities that, that we established as well as, you know, we got about 500,000 in there for vehicle replacements, which, you know, that's a pretty minimal number as well. So, you know, it's, it's, those are the two things that, you know, we, we put in there as assumptions, but compared to prior years, those are pretty slim, very thin.
And this year we had, we had about 1.6 million with the new crew and everything and some equipment for drainage. And then I see there's only 125,000 in there for next year and 1.6 million for streets and sidewalks. Were you, is there something?
So the, the 125 for the drainage fund, that's additional. So if you look at the description, it says $125,000 additional to the drainage fund. So what we put in there last year will still be there and this is just on, on top of that. So the base, the base budget assumption is that we put the same amount in there as we did last year. So, and I think, you know, a part of last year was buying equipment. So that, that means not only is that 125, but there will be some additional dollars in there that can go towards, you know, additional ditch cleaning. And I think we've, we're also looking at some additional engineering capacity as well.
And then a base assumption, assumption for a 3%, you know, raise and stuff for city staff and whatnot.
Yes, sir.
And 2% for call, okay. I appreciate everything you guys did. I mean, there were a lot of, a lot of ups and downs in that one. So I appreciate everything you guys did and Mr. Robuck, thanks for stepping up and a huge help. Thanks a bunch, guys.
Questions, comments?
John, can we have you at the podium, please?
All right.
I'm so glad to see you. Just about every time you come, you have good news. This is like medium news, so I'm a little taken aback. But I just want to understand, can we pull up the slide that has the red lines on it? I think it's slide seven on the PowerPoint. So defeating bonds is a big fancy word for essentially paying back early.
That's correct.
Just for the general public who doesn't work in finance world. So we're going to do some of that. And then, if my understanding correctly, TERS is very difficult and I just want to make sure the TERS owes the city of Pearland money. And in this case, in this chart under 2023 owes us almost $10.1 million and it owes these three other individual groups.
2023 has already been done. We did that after the fiscal year in October, November. So really, we're looking at 2024 now. The next amount is 10.7.
10.7 in this case. So instead of going into the general fund, we are now allocating those dollars to pay down debt.
Yes, sir. The intention when we sold the COs, stiffs of obligation in 2019, 2020, 2021, 22, and then also the one we're going to sell in 2023, estimated sell in 2023, was that we would take these reimbursements and pay these debts, this debt off early, which is why we have a balloon payment for the COs in 2030.
So if we didn't do, we didn't have the financial meltdown that we had in November, December, in theory, that just goes to the general fund, pays us back.
Well, we have, we always intended to move it to the debt service fund to pay off debt before maturity.
And how are we achieving some benefit? If that was always the plan, how are we achieving the material benefit to get the three cents down?
Because we're getting those reimbursements early and we initially projected, we were projecting to get these in '27, '28, '29.
You pulled forward money.
Well, they paid, generated more revenue to pay off these developers faster, we projected.
And then, pull up slide 11. And here we have in the green, 0.04, and then I heard a lot of three cents. Where am I missing the connection between this four cents and the three cents that Mr. Apperson kept alluding to?
I think I didn't quite hear.
Sure, I, I can, you can back me up, but the, or in a quarter is the difference in what we had previously projected that the debt service rate would be in FY '24 versus what it will be in FY '24 with the new assumptions.
The three cents.
The three cents is the max debt service rate over the next several years with the $181 million bond package. So our previous assumptions, as you see in the next to last column, with the $181 million bond package was we would peak, our debt service rate would peak at 39 and a half cents. You look at the right-hand column, with all the updated assumptions, our debt service rate will peak at 36 and a half, so three cents lower on the peak.
And, and this four cents versus what we projected in January 9th is essentially three quarters of it or three cents is driven by this TERS defeesance.
Yeah, by recognizing that the way the TERS payback was built into the debt model, that we could pull that money forward because the money was coming in much sooner.
And then can we go to slide eight? I'm just, I'm information gathering right now. So this is what we're presuming to do then?
We're going to bring this to the next meeting. Yes, sir.
And we're going to save 2.1 million over the life. The items in the box on the bottom, we're going to save that over the life of the deal or in this case, the bonds.
About $140,000 a year. Subject to market conditions, this is based on assumed interest rate.
Got it. Cool. All right. John, you got any more bag, bag of trick items? Are you going to go back in your bag six months from now when we, when we're looking down the 7% or sorry, the seven cent rate hike or whatever it is? Or are you going to have some more tricks or is this the last of it?
There, there is another refunding opportunity that comes available in November of this year, but it's a lot smaller and depending on market conditions, it may or may not generate the savings threshold of 3% PV savings. So we'll wait and see before we present that to you guys.
You got one more trick in there.
Yeah, it's for, it'll be for fiscal year '25, not '24.
I, I, I appreciate the effort. I think, I think we have asked an inordinate amount from you to do a lot of heavy lifting that we were not able to do nor capable to do. You're getting us out of a gigantic jam and I just appreciate your acumen and your, your efforts on that. This, this is, uh, this is complex.
You got a great, you got a great team.
So I do want to clarify, we discovered where we could pull this money forward and we asked John to build that into the rate.
I respect that, but John telling me makes it so, not, not our team, unfortunately. So.
I just want you to know where it came from and John reran the model. So we appreciate that and he verified that what we were thinking and, and asking was feasible.
Oh, thank you, John. Can we go to slide 17 and 18 really quickly, make sure I understand? Oh, one more thing, sorry, John. We don't have any homestead cap exemption. You're not anticipating that happening this year?
If your values go up more than we projected, you'll, you will, but.
For what you're doing across all the different cities and jurisdictions, you're not anticipating value jumps that high.
Uh, we are seen in different areas, yes. Up north, we're seeing, we saw 30, 40% growth in some homes. And so we were going to have two or three years of that probably where it hits the 10% cap.
So you're thinking like Conroe?
Conroe, yes, sir.
They're still dealing with explosive growth. Okay, cool. All right, great. And then on slide 17 and 18, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, this model isn't producing a homestead cap loss. This is just all the value and that's leading to the 296 on average tax bill increase. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's taking all the assumptions that we talked about in this sample budget, you know, that's, that we're kind of using as our working model. And then the, the tax increase associated with before these debt side changes and afterwards.
Okay, so the 206 is after all of John's tricks and all of our issues and all of our pulling money forward, the 206 is what you guys are projecting on average residents will pay?
With significant caveats because typically we run these examples from actual households. And since we don't have the new valuations for these, they're not out yet, we just plugged in a, an assumption assumed 5%.
And, and one more thing on the assumptions, what is the general fund expenses that you guys are projecting for next year?
Do we have the total, Eric?
Not on hand. We can get that out in an email tomorrow.
I'd like to know that because that, that is predicated how all these numbers are, are being produced. And so I'm, I'm curious that we don't, I would have concern that we don't have that off the top if we don't, if we're, if we're shooting out numbers.
We have that, we just don't have that in this. I mean, that, that, those budget assumptions, those all build into that. And that's, you know, what the number is, we just don't have that presented tonight. It's, it's, you know, it, we're growing again, so it's probably larger.
My, now we're asking for input, I'm, I'm, here's my input. Residents are going to feel something. I don't know if they're going to feel 296 or 206. It's a lot of caveats here. I don't think that there's going to be a way that they feel nothing. The state gave us a homestead cap loss exemption that was nothing by our genius, something coming down from the state. But the reality is, I bet you a lot of residents don't feel that increase. I wish we were growing as fast as Conroe, but we're not. I would tell the folks at the dais, I take no pleasure in where we are, but I would really look hard at what we're spending money on. This is depending a lot on financial expertise to pull us through. There's a spend side to this on the debt side and on the M and O side, and we have control of it. Member Barry pointed out all the different little categories that add up to that. There is real numbers there, they are, they are large and we need to do our part to, to get that number down. I would ask from the body if, if they would entertain it, that maybe we have a workshop, whether it be here or somewhere else, and, and really look at where can we make those cuts? Because my position then, my position now is the budget that we pass is not one that we could sustain financially. $110 million expenses was more than what we could sustain. The data that we passed that budget on was fictitious, was not accurate and now we are where we are. And I'm not hearing, we're hearing all the other ways to find dollars. We are not hearing, we're tightening the bill. And I would really just ask that we consider that, think about it. We don't want to go there ultimately, that's fine. We should at least have a discussion so that the voters can see, citizens can see, here's what we're doing to remedy this. We are putting an extraordinary amount of pressure on, on TERS and, and different manipulations to get there. And the reality is, we're still sending probably a bill somewhere around $200 extra than we did the year before. So I'm willing to have that discussion, I'd like to have it. I, I, I don't think there are a lot of sacred cows, but we have to at least have the discussion. I'm appreciative for the efforts to try to get us here, but I think we have a long way to go and I think we have a lot of input that we can offer to that. Thank you.
Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how to say this, we had a really good workshop Saturday, had about a six-hour robust discussion. And I value everybody's input that was there. In, in terms of the bond defeesance, what's our threshold policy or practice wise? I know this one's coming in at 5.5%.
I think John's probably the best to give us kind of historically what, what, where they recommend and where they don't.
Historically, it's been 3% PV savings, present value savings. So anything above 3% is pretty much a go. You know, if, if we're doing a restructuring like we did in December, obviously that's not in the equation, but we like to see anything over 3%.
All right. Thank you, and that'll be coming back next week?
Yes, first meeting in March, yes, sir.
Great, thank you. And I'd just like to thank staff for digging in. This is, you're dealing with TERS DAP, all the fun acronyms. So I appreciate you, I guess, challenging our models. When I, I first got on the, the DAP, there was a question as to if any, if the city would ever receive any funds coming back from the TERS. So I'm glad to see it was successful and, yeah, I, I appreciate the hard work by our staff and, and you, John, for kicking it around.
Yeah, the questions, comments?
He's great, oh, lady, I'm sorry. Good stuff, yeah, and I, you know, thanks staff for being creative, thinking, you know, open your minds, trying to figure out, you know, where, what and how, you know, we can do this. You know, there's a lot of us that have a lot of confidence in your jobs and, and your abilities to do your job. So know that, know that you guys do a good job and I know your heart's in the right spot to make this happen. John, always, you know, you're, you're a good resource to play that devil's advocate and challenge, you know, and challenge, you know, what this looks like. So, but again, this is, I mean, this is in February and we're taking a look at what budget may look like. We don't typically get this until much further down the line. And so this will help us, you know, get there. I do agree, at some point here relatively soon, we need to have a discussion about some of the additional assumptions about staffing and about other things, you know, moving forward. I know, I guess usually it's in May-ish that we have the mid-year budget amendment. And so, you know, how first quarter has ended up and, and where those dollars are, you know, savings and those types of things are coming, I think it'll be important to see how that's working its way through as well. So, yeah, so I think we're, I think we're in a good, a much better spot today than where we were when we found out in, in November, let alone, you know, when we, when we finalized our budget amendment on December the 5th, so, or December the 12th. So very important that we've gotten here and, and continue on. I, I'm, I'm sure every month we'll have something to do with our budget this year, you know, moving forward to, to the next year. So, and just since we're talking about this and it matters, you know, for the public as As Mr. Apperson pointed out, the, we, we do have the amended tax calculation worksheet. So we thank the Tax Assessor Collector for, for that. It's been posted, it is up on the website. Secondly, we do have language of a bill at Ledge Council in Austin. Hopefully, very, very soon, we'll have that finalized in a bill filed by State Representative Thompson. And early, early look at it from those in the, in the know, the two different committees that it's supposed to go through, one in the House, one in the Senate, they, they like what we're proposing. It's agnostic on whether the city wins or voter wins. It's, if you have a mistake, you fix it. Regardless of when you find the mistake, you fix it. Those types of things, it does go into increment and how you deal with all that. So I think it's, I think it's good, it's a good piece of legislation. It, I was telling somebody the other day, it, it scares me because it actually has some common sense behind it. So that, that kind of bothers me a little bit that it's, that it's in Austin and in the Capitol. But we'll be up there the next several days and, and having some conversations about it. Same thing over the next couple of weeks and even months. Again, thank you guys for all the yeoman's work to get us to where we are. With that, we're going to move to matters from, matters removed from consent agenda. We've already dispensed with those, other business, there is none. Mayor Council issues for council discussion, there are none. So we'll be moving to executive session under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters Regarding City Boards and Commissions. So, and 551.072 deliberation, deliberations regarding real property. So with that, we will move into exec session at 8:12. Went to bed Friday night. Went to bed Friday night.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to adjournment at 8:39.
There's some better ones.